All right, we will call the meeting to order. This is Freeport Town Council Meeting number 0824. Today is April 23rd, Tuesday, and we're just a few minutes after 6:00, starting our regular council meeting this evening. Welcome to all of you. It's wonderful to see a full room. We'll be getting to your item very shortly. We have a couple of things to take care of, but please, first, as we do with every meeting, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you're looking for an agenda for this evening's meeting, there should be one on the back table in the back of the room there. Please pick up one. If there isn't one, we can get some more made. I'd like to ask a member of the audience to read our 15 pages of minutes. No, just kidding. Our second order of business is to waive the reading of the minutes and accept them as presented if we don't have any questions, any comments or questions about tonight's minutes, or last week's minutes.
Second.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, 60. Chris?
Oh, Darrell abstained.
Darrell abstained. That's right. Okay, five with one abstained. Five to zero.
We didn't recall?
Oh, we didn't find out who's here, did we? And why do I always forget that? Yeah. So, we have to officially say who's here. Thank you for that reminder. Counselor Pillsbury?
Present.
Counselor Fournier?
Here.
Counselor Benoit?
Here.
Counselor Smith?
Present.
Counselor Pilch?
Here.
And the Chair, John Egan, is here. Sorry about that. We do have to have that on the record so we know who's here. Counsel Lawrence is out with a medical excuse for this evening. Our next order is announcements, and I have a couple to read first before we go down the line. Just to remind folks that we always have opportunities to participate and volunteer to help run your community, and we have the following board and committee vacancies available. On the Board of Appeals, we have one slot. We have one slot on the Board of Assessment Review. Coastal Waters Commission is looking for a new member, as is Complete Streets, looking for a new member, and the Police Advisory Commission is also looking for a member. And then we have three slots available on the Winslow Park. So if that is a beloved town asset and you want to participate, you can call the town and we can connect you with how to become a member of the Winslow Park Commission. Any other announcements from other councilors before we move on, now that we know who's here? Okay, our next item on the agenda is information exchange. This generally is a chance for councilors to share feedback from constituents, what's going on at our various committees, lots of committees, and any updates in between from the last meeting we had at the beginning of April, three weeks ago, and this evening. Any announcement, information exchange items. Darrell?
One item that was asked from several people references the storm and getting rid of debris up at the landfill, if there could be a mechanism put in place in the future that no fee be charged for, like tree limbs and whatever. So I said, "That's probably a good idea, and instead of having ever, maybe something declared, maybe we can set something in the future where the manager or someone could authorize, no payment, we have a such a large windstorm."
Yeah, there was a lot of debris down, that's for sure. Yeah, we can certainly take a look at that. Other items to share?
Just one update from the Sustainability Advisory Board. We'll be meeting with them in a couple of weeks for a workshop to review the Climate Action Plan that we received the draft of at our last meeting, and since that is a significant piece of work, they've requested our familiarity with it before that workshop, just so we're prepared with questions and can get into the meat of it without too much walkthrough or overview.
Okay, great. I encourage anyone in the public, including those in the room this evening, if you have questions or want to know more about our Climate Action Plan, which, as Eric just said, has been a long process and work, there are numerous ways to get that. You can get it off our town website. You can pick up copies here, and you can just call the clerk or one of us, and we can make sure you get it on an email attachment or on paper, whichever way you would prefer to digest it. It's really interesting, and it's a good look about where things are today and where we might be going in the future as the climate changes. I just want to highlight something that has been also a long time coming, coinciding with--
Recording in progress.
--the beautiful picture of Florida Lake on the cover of our budget books this evening, which is coming up later in the agenda. I also received generously some really nice photographs of Florida Lake from the 1960s. And if you were not in Freeport in the 1960s or the early 1970s and didn't, weren't aware of the dramatic, essentially playground, resort-type improvements that were put out at Florida Lake, there are hardly any remnants of them today, you might be surprised and maybe not even recognize what it looks like. And so it's absolutely a historical artifact about what was done largely by volunteers 50-plus years ago, 60-plus years ago, at Florida Lake to make that a destination recreation area. Many things you might not be able to do today with current regulations, such as managing floodwaters and wetlands, but anyway, they were done back then, and it was an enormous effort. And while we're making improvements to our assets around town and trying to improve access to our public recreation assets around town, we have some plans to try and make a more accessible trail out to Florida Lake, and we're also going to put a historical kiosk at--
Recording in progress.
--the entrance to Florida Lake to capture this history, so that anybody going out there to visit, it's out on Route 125, the northwest corner of town, anybody going out there to visit will see what that history looked like. And it's fascinating to see some of these pictures, and there'll be some more, and then go out and look at the pristine wetland and bird sanctuary that it is today. Nice, nice counterpoint, but not to forget the history of the people that created that asset for us years ago. So, anyway, very happy, thanks to Linda Foster and her efforts to get us that photograph, set of photographs. The other items for information exchange. All right. We're going to switch the order of our items in the Town Manager's Report so that we can get to the really exciting part, which many of you, if not all of you, are here for this evening. I'll turn it over to Sophie to introduce the chief.
So I think the chief has asked me to kick this off, I believe, and we are going to go alphabetically because it's easier. So anytime you pick leadership in a fire department, it's a really critical choice because morale, especially in a hybrid department like Freeport has, is really important, and people have to have confidence in leadership. When I put this advertisement out for a deputy chief, I was really concerned that we might not get great applicants, given the way applications to municipal work has been going. And it was such a wonderful pool that we couldn't just have one, but we picked two. So I would want to start with our first deputy chief. His name is Robert Bernard. We call him Bob. So Bob is coming to us full-time in July after retiring from a whole career, ending at the Agonquit Fire Department. He's a captain and a paramedic. He was a reserve police officer. I bet you can't guess it, but he was a military person. Naval Reserve, he was a hospital corpsman. He has an AA in fire technology, it's fire, and a BS in fire administration, but he also attended the National Fire Academy and came out of the Managing Officer Program, which is a really high bar to meet at the, at least for a small town like Freeport. When I met Bob, I was immediately taken with his approach and really looking forward to what he can build. He's excited to come to us and work with us on our inspection program, and if you're interested, I'm not--
Recording in progress.
I'm not going to go through his full resume, but I will tell you, seriously, the longest resume I have ever had, when he listed all of his scholastic achievements. So I don't know how we do this, chief, but I'm going to just step down and say that congratulations and thank you very much for being here. I know the chief is going to--
So just a couple comments, excuse me, a couple comments.
If you could make it to the microphone--
Yeah, sorry.
--capture your voice. Thank you.
So just a couple comments from my perspective. Bob and I go back, you know, 30-plus years working together in Gorham Fire Department. So when I saw his application come in and knowing Bob over the years, I knew we had a strong candidate, and I can't be any happier to have him on board.
Great.
So, to do the pen and ceremony, you have his badge. He also gets to swear in his position as our town clerk. So we'll give the swearing in first, and then we will give the badge to his mother and sister.
All right. Repeat after me. I, Robert Bernard, do swear.
I, Robert Bernard, do swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So long as I shall.
So long as I shall.
Continue a citizen thereof.
As long as I continue a citizen of.
I do swear.
I do swear.
That I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As deputy fire chief.
As deputy fire chief.
To serve according to the Constitution.
To serve according to the Constitution.
And the laws of the state.
And the laws of the state.
And charter and ordinances of the town of Freeport.
And charter and ordinances of the town of Freeport.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thanks so much.
[applause] Recording in progress. [laughter] I think I did it. [laughter]
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Congratulations. So, are you ready for me to go again? Chief and I are a good team. So next, we have Luke Fashan. Luke is coming to us from the Topsom Fire Department, where he was a lieutenant. Has 15 years of fire EMS services. My understanding is that he is a heck of a talented paramedic and can certainly run a shift when we did the reference checks, that's what came back. He is a sergeant currently with the National Guard. I bet you couldn't tell. He has an associate's degree in paramedicine and is working on his bachelor's degree in human resources. He has made a pretty quick impact on the Freeport Fire Department. So he is here full-time at this point. He's working, I love, I love the new deputies because one works Saturdays and the other works Sundays, and I think it's great that we're going to have some leadership on the floor. And Luke is most definitely making a huge impact. He helped us resolve a radio issue. Well, the parts aren't there yet, but at least we know what the problem is. And he is really supporting Paul on the floor, which is something that we've really wanted for a while, and it's nice to see Paul's vision kind of taking, taking root. So, welcome to the town of Freeport. Bob's resume is only, you're only second to him.
A couple of comments from me, is that when we were doing reference checks and stuff, it's that his references were solid, and basically, you know, we were getting a good person, and we're very lucky to have him join us as part of the team. I look forward to moving this department forward with these two gentlemen by my side, and I think there's great things to come and we'll overcome some of the challenges that we face in the fire emergency services. But much appreciated, so welcome aboard.
All right. Okay, you're going to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Luke Fashan, do swear.
I, Luke Fashan, do swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So long as I shall.
So long as I shall.
Continue a citizen thereof.
Continue a citizen thereof.
I do swear.
I do swear.
That I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
All the duties incumbent on me.
All the duties incumbent on me.
As deputy fire chief.
As deputy fire chief.
To serve according to the Constitution.
To serve according to the Constitution.
And the laws of the state.
And the laws of the state.
And charter and ordinances of the town of Freeport.
And charters and--
And ordinances.
Or ordinances of the town of Freeport.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
[applause]
I'd like to thank the manager and the council for this opportunity, establishing some new traditions as we move forward with our promotions within the department. And for the family and friends, we've got juice and cake down at the station for some photo opportunities and some socialization while the council gets back to the hard work.
I'm going to say goodbye for that.
Juice and cakes.
Yeah.
Just go steal some cake. Jessica. Thanks again. Thank you all. Congratulations.
So next, we have Sue Baker. Oh, my word. Everybody's getting cake. So, I'm going to--
I saw one yesterday. So Nick, you're up next.
I don't think I've ever seen him without a hat on.
We have Sue. Can we bring Sue over to the meeting?
She's a panelist.
Okay, so she's already in.
Yep.
Okay, great.
I've asked her to unmute.
All right, so we're, continue on with our meeting. We're at the segment of the Town Manager's Report. We just had a fabulous ceremony about welcoming two leadership positions to our fire department. Next up is conversation about flood maps and flood limits, and we have a representative from the state, as well as Nick Adams, our code officer, to explain what the next item is about within the Town Manager's Report. So if you're following along, we're still under the fifth order of business on our agenda.
So just before you do that, Sue, if you would like to be seen, you could turn your video on.
Okay, how's that?
Looks great. Nice to meet you, Sue. How are you?
You too. Great, thank you. Happy to be here.
All right. Good evening. Nick Adams, the code enforcement officer of the town. So as some of the councilor probably members are aware, we've been going through the flood plane changes for many years now. Finally, all the appeals and stuff like that have been settled, so now we are required to update our model flood plane ordinance, as well as our flood plane maps. We have to do that by June 24th of this year to be still included in the National Flood Insurance Program. So as we're doing this, as rewriting the ordinance, basically, it's just going to be a repeal and repeat, which this will be at a different meeting with what we're going to do with rewriting this and speaking with some consultants, the two major changes that are coming, that are proposed in the main model ordinance that are major changes in the opinion of several consultants that do work on, in the coastline, is on shoreline stabilization projects and on wharfs and velocity zones, which are zones that have wave action, which I think there's a change now for only permanent wharfs, is what the model ordinance is going to say. Those now are proposed that they have to have a professional engineer review those projects. Prior to this, there haven't been engineers involved in those two projects. Commercial wharfs require an engineer, which, in my opinion, would make, you know, if you're driving vehicles or you're doing lobster and other things like that, you have public and other stuff like that, but residential ones didn't. So there's been several concerns from the consultants that have reached out to me on it, and I've reached out to Sue and Janet at the state, and I've asked them for some more clarity, where these changes are coming from, and, you know, if there are FEMA requirements and other things like that, to make sure that we're consistent and we're still going to be able to be in the flood insurance program.
Nick, what's the timing of when we'll actually have information in front of us to make a decision on or take, take action on?
So currently, right now, I got the ordinance drafted, ready to go to ordinance committee, then to come to the council with the model ordinance language in it. I've made some tweaks to make it consistent with how our administration runs with the project review board instead of planning board and a couple other small things. But those two items I've held out on to see if there's any wiggle room with the state to allow us to not require engineers for these projects. I'm not advocating either way because I'll be the one administering and enforcing it, so I wanted just to put it out there for the council to make the decision and maybe have the state input on it to see where that goes. If the state approves the ordinance, if we put information in there and it doesn't get approved by the state or it doesn't get approved by FEMA, where does that go? But if we adopt the model ordinance as it's written, is my understanding, we will still be in, in line with FEMA's requirements.
So tonight's conversation is really just kind of a early exposition to discuss the issue and let us know what's coming.
On those two issues, yeah. The other issues, I mean, there's stuff in there that some changes, but it's not really, not much you can really do with it. It's, you know, you're changing the maps from, we have like 10 maps now, we're going to be going to like 20-something maps because they go, the current maps are from 1985, which, they're not ortho imagery, they're not based on two-foot lidar data, so they're very outdated, but they are just town-specific. The new maps, they went county, so we kind of get overlap into Brunswick and Yarmouth and other things. So there's more maps, but they're more detailed and easier to review.
Okay.
Do we, do we need to go through the ordinance committee for that, or can we just bring it straight to council since we're not really drafting it?
Well, I think Nick and I are doing a little bit of background research to find out how much wiggle room we may have, and based on that, we'll bring it to either place, but it will, we're looking at a public hearing, calling the public hearing on the 21st of, or 22nd of May, whatever the May, huh? Oh, May 21st, it's a good day, and for the public hearing on the first meeting in June in adoption.
And do you want to--
Oh, Darrell's got it.
Oh, sorry, Darrell.
One question I would have is what the cost for, like an engineering study would be to the public, and then maybe, you know, have we had a history of failures of these, you know, individual wharfs that, you know, it would require a permit, because I'm not sure, you know, we have. So those are a couple of questions I think both the ordinance committee will have and I certainly will have when we get there. So, thank you.
Sue might be able to answer the history part.
Okay. Well, I'm ready to jump in if you'd like me to.
You have control of that line over there. Yeah, go ahead, Sue.
Okay.
Sue Lake from, sorry, Sue Baker from the state.
Thank you. I am actually the coordinator for the state's flood plane management program, and we're located in the Department of Agriculture, Conservation and Forestry. So I just want to let you know, I provided a document a little earlier this afternoon to Nick just to explain, I mean, why the NFIP or the National Flood Insurance Program was created, and a list of the history, and how long the town has participated, how many policies there are in effect, and how many claims there are. So I just wanted to state that first, just to let you know that the town has that information. And I think specifically, like Nick said, and he did a great job giving the update, I just want to correct, I think he said the maps or the ordinance had to be adopted by June 24th. That's actually June 20th. So just to make that clear. And these two sections that we have proposed in the ordinance, first, I'll address the wharfs, piers and docks. That has been in there for a while. The change in the requirement is for permanent wharfs, piers and docks to be engineered. And so I would say at this point, there is a little wiggle room, but we don't have the exact answer as of yet. In addressing the new piece that addresses, you know, riprap and those kinds of things that are, that are being added into the flood hazard area, particularly in Zone VE, which is along the coastline, where we have wind and wave action. So this new section was precipitated by conversations with the FEMA Regional Office in noting that we don't have any standards or requirements in our ordinance for these types of projects. So we worked together to get some language together that could be adopted. We have certainly heard the consultants that are concerned about having to require an engineer for all wharfs, piers and docks. My understanding is that we're currently experiencing a shortage of coastal engineers to do this work. So what I want to say here, and I talked to Nick earlier about this, is we had a meeting last Friday to start the conversation with mainly DEP because they are regulatory agency, and we overlap with their regulations. We also included the Department of Marine Resources. So we basically just, you know, went over what the issue is, what the concerns are, and, you know, we have made a commitment with FEMA and the other state agencies that we will work on this language together and hopefully come to a better, a better way to do this in the ordinance. So for now, well, the next meeting, we've got with staff from these agencies and FEMA. We are going to meet on May 7th, and depending on, you know, the outcome of the meeting, if, if we are able to determine what language will work at that, you know, point in time, we're going to do that. It's possible we may have it in time for your public hearing, but I don't know that yet. But I do want to assure the council-- that are being added into the flood hazard area, particularly in Zone VE, which is along the coastline, where we have wind and wave action. So this new section was precipitated by conversations with the FEMA Regional Office in noting that we don't have any standards or requirements in our ordinance for these types of projects. So we worked together to get some language together that could be adopted. We have certainly heard the consultants that are concerned about having to require an engineer for all wharfs, piers and docks. My understanding is that we're currently experiencing a shortage of coastal engineers to do this work. So what I want to say here, and I talked to Nick earlier about this, is we had a meeting last Friday to start the conversation with mainly DEP because they are regulatory agency and we overlap with their regulations. We also included the Department of Marine Resources. So we basically just, you know, went over what the issue is, what the concerns are. And, you know, we have made a commitment with FEMA and the other state agencies that we will work on this language together and hopefully come to a better, a better way to do this in the ordinance. So for now, well, the next meeting we've got with staff from these agencies and FEMA. We are going to meet on May 7th. And depending on, you know, the outcome of the meeting, if we are able to determine what language will work at that, you know, point in time, we're going to do that. It's possible we may have it in time for your public hearing, but I don't know that yet. But I do want to assure the council and the community that we are committed to bring this language in line with what the other state agencies are requiring. And we need FEMA's blessing in order to do so, so that they will have approval. So I do want to say that all I can really tell you right now is that we are committed to addressing the concerns that we've received and hoping that we can update the language to be something more in line with the other agencies. So having said that, I just want to recognize that the town is on the timeline of having to adopt the new ordinance prior to June 20th so that they do not get suspended from the National Flood Insurance Program. We definitely don't want that to happen. So right now, I am advising the community to go ahead with these two paragraphs so that we have something in there. However, as soon as there is guidance available, we are going to provide that to the communities. And if you have time to get that into the ordinance, that's great. We'd like to have you do that. But if you don't, we don't want to see the community, you know, not adopt the ordinance and get suspended from the program. So we are committed to doing this and the process is moving along. So that's really all I can add to the conversation at this point. And with that, I'm happy to take questions that you may have.
Sue, in the clock of municipal ordinance changes and votes and approvals, talking about something on April 23rd and wanting to take action and have it be adopted by June 20th might as well be tomorrow morning. That's a really fast timeframe. So I want to ask if we have an ordinance that meets the FEMA requirements but doesn't yet incorporate the agency recommendations that you've outlined in your memo. Is it, let me just confirm that. I guess it's my understanding that we could still get our ordinance approved and be compliant with FEMA for the flood insurance program even without those changes. Is that a true statement?
Well, the guidance that we've gotten from FEMA is that we would like the communities to get something in the ordinance. And if our guidance is different, we'll provide that as soon as we know what the language is so that, you know, the communities can use the guidance in the interim prior to them getting the, you know, new language into the ordinance.
Daryl?
I guess I'd like to have the question answered. If we don't put this new language in the ordinance, will we still be covered under the floodplain flood insurance program?
Okay. I don't know when the last time the community adopted a floodplain management ordinance off the top of my head. But one big change that does need to be in there is the new map date. If it isn't in there, you know, that is something that FEMA will suspend the community for. Like I said, FEMA is recommending that it be added, knowing that we are going to be working on potentially changing this. And so I just, you know, want to say that we don't want the community to be suspended from the program because the first and foremost effect of that would be for any lending transactions if there is a buyer and they are going for a mortgage to, for the building that's in the flood hazard area. The lender has to require flood insurance as a condition of that loan. So if the community gets suspended from the program, that federally-backed flood insurance will not be available to them. And that's pretty serious in my mind. And it also means that if there are people in town that already have a mortgage and their lender is requiring flood insurance from them, then they won't be able to renew their policy when it comes up for renewal. So those are probably the first and foremost effects of it. And also in times of disaster assistance, there are small business loans and other types of assistance that are available after a presidentially declared disaster, and we've just had at least two of those between December and mid-January. So those kinds of loans require flood insurance coverage in order to get them.
Right.
So these are the ramifications.
Right. And I agree. I don't think that's the question, Sue, about whether or not we're going to comply and be eligible for the flood insurance program. That's a given and we're going to pursue that. I think the question was more, we have, we have an ordinance replacement, as Nick pointed out. And so, and I'm not an expert on this at all, but I'm just relying on staff telling us that we're, that we're in compliance with FEMA. And so we just, that's what we're trying to determine is, is the pathway that we're moving forward on adequate from your perspective, even though it may not include the additional requirements that you outlined at the beginning of your conversation about engineering residential wharfs?
Okay. Well, I have talked about it with FEMA and they would like to see the community do that. I can check with them and I will do so to make sure that if you didn't add that, whether or not they would be okay with that, because that's really, the ball's really in their court there. And I don't really have much control over that. But I will definitely, you know, double-check on the question and make sure either way because we certainly, you know, want, want to do the right thing.
The point of my question is that, yes, it is. Thank you.
There was one more thing I should have added at the beginning when I started talking about this, is that FEMA hasn't updated the federal regulations for the National Flood Insurance Program in more than 30 years. So when these regulations were crafted and last updated, there is nothing in the federal regs that applies to wharf stocks and piers or the other types of development that we are trying to cover in this new section of the ordinance. However, we are recognizing that, you know, these types of projects are, you know, considered development under the floodplain management ordinance and they do need to be permitted. So right now, these things are not in the federal regs, but I expect there will be something at some point in the future. So I just wanted you to understand that they aren't in there yet, but we are making these changes at the recommendation of FEMA.
Right. Thank you. The context for my follow-up question was because of the timeframe between now and when we're going to have to write something and have it adopted to meet the January 20th, that is not very much notice at all for a significant amount of property owners in Freeport who may be affected by this directly. So that's what I'm trying to get at. So others have questions?
Can I just, let me follow up with that. All of the communities were notified on December 20th that the final map date has been issued. So there's been a six-month period in which the communities, you know, have to update their ordinance. So, you know, while we are here in April, I think the community has been aware of it since the final maps were issued.
Sue, I have a question for you, Sue, on the process. And this is, I think, the concerns that we're hearing, I'm hearing within the community, is that as a local ordinance, we have our own processes that we are obliged to follow, which includes taking public comment, having a public hearing. And the question is, if we don't have any leeway in what the language is, if we simply have to take this sample ordinance, then why are we even having a public hearing if public comment doesn't, if we ourselves have no control over what the language is? So this language, I think, I think we also have some concerns about the fact that if it isn't directly FEMA language, if it's, if it's main floodplain management program language, that has not itself gone through any legislative body but is being directed to us, where exactly is the legislative public oversight of what you're asking us to pass?
Well, I think, you know, it's more of the difference between some of the other state regulations is that, you know, most of them are rooted in the federal statute for the program. So I think, you know, all of the changes that we make, many of them are based on recommendations that we get from local officials. And I know when, you know, Nick first brought this to my attention, we talked about, you know, whether or not, you know, if the community wants to give us some language to consider, we will definitely do that. Our process at this point is to make sure that, you know, we have input from the other state regulatory agencies so that we can, you know, try to bring this in line with what they are already requiring. So it doesn't, you know, necessarily have to be burdensome because that's, you know, kind of what I'm hearing too, is, you know, the language, you know, will do just that. And that is not our intent. So we do want to continue to work on that.
Can I answer your question? Can I have a follow-up? So I'll try and be crisp. For me, there are three things that I'm not clear on that I would love to get some guidance from FEMA on specifically related to the flood insurance program. One is the date of the maps. So our ordinance refers to a map date, which it sounds like we need to update to the date that was announced in December in order to maintain compliance with the flood insurance program. So I'd like to confirm that. Secondly, there's two paragraphs that we're being encouraged to include in our ordinance as, so I'll call it a stopgap. So are those two paragraphs required to be in the ordinance by June 20th in order to maintain compliance with the flood insurance program? And then thirdly, it sounds like there's some discussion that needs to happen among the state agencies to make sure that all these regulations are aligned, and that discussion is starting on May 7th. So it may or may not be complete in time for us to get into our ordinance. So is that discussion or the results of that discussion a requirement for maintaining compliance with either the National Flood Insurance Program or the various regulations from the state agencies, which sound like they may conflict until that discussion happens? So those are the three things that I question, and I need to know which of those things need to happen by June 20th in order to maintain compliance with the program.
Okay. So the ordinance does need to be updated by June 20th. You know, that is a given. And, you know, we are, you know, working on the discussion and how to change this, but I will double-check. When I initially talked with FEMA about it, they were, you know, wanting the communities to adopt this. But I will definitely take that question forward and find out whether or not you can omit the new paragraph and whether or not they are willing to let us, you know, take out the language for a professional engineer when it comes to wharfs, piers and docks that are in Zone VE. If there are other types of professionals that can do the work and FEMA is satisfied with that, I think we would like to open it up. My understanding is there are marine contractors when it comes to wharfs, piers and docks, and they're pretty knowledgeable. So it's possible that we will be able to open that up. I just don't know the answer at this time. But I will follow up the meeting with those questions to FEMA so that we can be sure and that we can give you the best guidance to move forward.
Just in terms of, obviously, timeline is of the essence here, do you have a sense of how long it might take to turn around answers to those questions? Is that typically a quick process or is it, there a lag?
Well, we, we want it to be quick. We really want to resolve this as quickly as we can. So I don't know that answer, but I think we do want to do it sooner rather than later.
Daryl?
So what I'm getting at is if we in fact update our ordinance to include the new mapping, that's one critical point. I'm only speaking for myself here, but I'm very wary on adopting something that's recommended by FEMA that hasn't gone through a vetted system that may have a really significant input pack on our residents in town. So for me, that's going to be an awful hard hill to get over until it gets vetted. But if we can pass the ordinance and not affect the loans and the people that need the insurance by getting our new maps updated, I think that's probably the best thing to do, move forward. And then we're not under such a time constraint here to do what may have a significant impact, not only on the town of Freeport, but probably a lot out of the coastal communities.
It is, on all of the coastal communities.
Yeah. Thank you, Sue.
Thanks, Sue. Nick, you got anything to add after that back and forth?
No, I got the direction. I made some notes. I'll follow up with Sue with some of the questions that goes forward, and we might propose them a little different to come forward first and then work on the other language. We'll work with FEMA and the state and see what we can come up with.
Yeah, I mean, before June 20th, I think we have three meetings. So that's not a lot of time for us to take action and adopt something sweeping and significant as a total change in our...
Yeah, there isn't a lot of other changes that are in there from, we last updated in '05. There is some datum changes and some other things that we don't need to bore with all those, but there isn't a lot of other changes that would really affect certain things. It's just those two ones that are big.
Sure. Okay. Thank you. And I recognize the notice came out in December. I remember when that came out, but I haven't heard a whole lot from general public, so I'm guessing people aren't really paying attention to this until we make something of it in terms of, here's what's going to happen and here's the change and it's going to happen by June 20th and here's going to be the impact.
Yeah.
That's when we'll start hearing from...
We've made a lot of public outreach in the past couple, three or four years with this, and the maps really haven't changed since their last go-around. We had a public hearing.
Quite a long time ago. I get that.
1985.
Yeah, that's a long time ago.
Okay. The other thing that I would add is that we do have a public meeting set up. And Nick, I'm hoping that you have received word. So there will be a public open house, and it is Cumberland County. It is slated to be in South Portland. It is a 4:00 to 7:00 PM timeframe in which anyone from the public can come in and get their answered questions. There's no formal presentation, but there will be FEMA and state staff available to, you know, help property owners look at the map and see how their risk may be changing. There will also be FEMA insurance people there that can address insurance questions that people may have. And I think we will also have one of the coastal contractors there, if there are engineers or, you know, anyone else that would like to, you know, more information about the actual mapping itself and how it was developed. So we are encouraging all of the communities to make sure, you know, that their residents know that this is upcoming.
What's the date, Sue?
And if anyone, you're going to ask me the date, right?
Yeah. 4:00 to 7:00 PM, but that's...
If you give me just a second, I can answer that. I just have to navigate to it. I just have to navigate to it. Bear with me while the wheels churn. It'll just be a second.
Our planner indicates that it's May 13th, maybe from the material that you sent out earlier. I'm not looking at it directly.
Oh, yeah, that's the, the actual, we did send out the notice of public, notice of the public open house. Yes, it is Monday, May 13th from 3:00 to 7:00 PM, and it will be in the South Portland City Hall Council Chambers at 25 Cottage Road in South Portland.
Right.
And anyone that can't make it to the meeting, you know, at any time, before or after that date, if they need assistance from us, they are encouraged to, you know, contact Nick if he can help them. If not, they can certainly contact me or Janet, and we will follow up on their questions directly.
Thanks very much for joining us tonight, Sue. It's informative, and, you know, we've, we've got some, some work to do here before a pressing deadline that we're not going to let get by us.
Okay. And I do too. So I will be following up with FEMA just to, you know, find out what their recommendations are. So that'd be great. We will work on it.
Thank you. Sophie, all set? Anything else in your town manager report? Not related to flood maps?
Um, I'm going to pass today.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Thanks, Nick. Yeah, Darrell?
I, I know we got to update the map, so I'm just wondering, this seems to be a, something a little bit out of control, and I, I don't know if it'd be appropriate or not. I'll throw the idea out, maybe a letter to our representative saying, we need to maintain our coverage for our public along the coastal plain in light of what has happened. We understand we need to update the plans, but there's a lot of changes that are fitting on timeframe and, and put the brakes on. I know we've had it for six months, but this seems to be...
There actually has been a lot of work. I'll let the manager explain.
Yeah. So Nick has been doing a lot of work behind the scenes, and the model ordinance was in a much different format than what we were, what we were used to using. So that's why we're coming up with the repeal and replace. It's not so much that what is required is way out there. It's more the way it's set up, because they started fresh, to do the line-out and underline would be really confusing. So a repeal and replace is what we think the public would best understand as we go through our process. So that just means you line everything out and then just pull new language in. The two items that Nick brought to you today are the two places that we think are deviations from essentially what we're doing now. He spent a bunch of time making sure we were staying in alignment with the model ordinance and using Freeport's process, which is quite different than most communities. So that's why it didn't align perfectly with... So when it came to, so I, I would just appreciate Nick's patience dealing with Maine Flood Plane. I think Sue is a lovely person and gives us great technical advice when we call and we need help. On this particular one, Nick and I chatted today, and we're going to reach out for a legal opinion from Bernstein Schur, who has a land use relationship with the, with the town. Just to that question that Counselor Pilch asked of, can we do everything but this and still be in compliance? That's the question that we, that we have. And if what we're hearing from other professionals in this field is correct, the answer should be yes. And then, as Nick does all the time, he would continue to monitor and keep track of what FEMA is doing and if, what Flood Plane Management is doing, and if that program makes changes that we have to adopt or that, that makes sense for us, then we would come back to you with a simple amendment. So I'm quite comfortable with the timeline, simply because having seen the changes, they're really not going to impact as much as it sounds, I think, other than these two paragraphs. And I would just want to acknowledge publicly all the work that Nick has done to get us to this place.
What's the, what are the changes in the maps? Anything significant that we need to call out?
Yeah, there's a lot of significant changes in the maps, especially the way that the maps are, are drawn. First, the ones that are drawn now are paper copies from the eighties, but they're based on like 10-foot contour data. So people are getting put into flood zones that aren't really in the flood zone, so they're having to spend a lot of money with survey work and everything. So the new maps are ortho imagery with LiDAR data, which has two-foot contours, which are, they're more accurate. This has been going on since 2007, 2009. They, Cumberland and York County have been the two counties that are fighting FEMA to not adopt it, and finally, we've, all the appeal rights are basically out, and we have to do it now or else we're out. But there's a lot of people that are going from A zones to V zones. Winslow Park's a big area. The Heresicke going into the Marinas are two areas, and then some areas off Wolf's Neck and McCoy's side are, are raising quite a bit, which is going to change some people's flood insurance. And I would encourage people to come look at the maps. We've done this, I think, I've been here, what, seven years now? We've had a couple of public hearings on them. We've reached out to the major people that are impacted, and they didn't want to pursue any more appeals. But it is going to affect quite a bit of people. And if you're going to, one recommendation, recommendation I'd have is if you're going to be getting put into the flood zone, I would suggest getting flood insurance now because if you get it after the fact, it's going to be exponentially more than if you were already in flood insurance first.
Darrell?
So on that point, that's a valid point, Nick. How much work would it be just to send a notice to those particular areas, like say, you know, hey, heads up, this may change? I know, you know, we got duck away.
Yeah, we can do a postcard. That I think would be good and direct people if we, we have the map, so we can link them and give them a, a place to, to see them on the website, just because I think that's going to be a much easier way for them to see them. But yeah, that's possible. We can work together on that.
Yeah. Awesome. Thank you.
Can I just add one more thing? That was a great job by Nick, and you are actually very lucky to have a code officer like him. I completely agree. We definitely would be interested in, you know, knowing what the legal opinion is. And, oh, I had one other, one other thing that I wanted to, to go there, but, oh, the insurance. So if someone has a mortgage already, they will, in all likelihood, be contacted by their lender. If they are not in the flood hazard area and they are going into the flood hazard area, they will get a notice from their lender, and they generally give 45 days to, for them to secure a flood insurance policy. However, when it comes to pricing, they have, it's really no longer necessary to get the flood insurance prior to the map change. If they get it within the first one-year period after the map change, it will be similar. So I just wanted to update that piece. Other than that, Nick, you did a great job, and I really appreciate your help too.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on. All right. Our, thanks for that. Our next order of business is public comment. This is for the public here in the room in council chambers to bring forward any concerns or questions that they may have to the council on items that are not on our agenda. We have a public hearing coming up shortly, and then we're setting two public hearings and a few action items, and then discussion about our award-winning budget presentation. So if you're here for any of those items, stay tuned. We'll be able to hear from you later, but if you have something that you'd like to talk about that's not on our agenda, this is the time. If you're in the room for public comment on non-agenda items, please raise your hand and make your way to the podium. Not seeing any. We'll move on. Our next item is item number 122-24, which is tonight's consent agenda. The consent agenda is a list of relatively routine and non-controversial items that the council passes without individual discussion. The agenda this evening has to do with some appointments of our existing staff, as well as the appointment of a new deputy code enforcement officer, and some contributions to the library, and releasing some minor property deeds through tax purposes. So any reason to take an item off of tonight's consent agenda before we put the action item on the floor? Dan?
Just one item. The last item is about modifying the town manager's contract to allow the place of residents to be outside the boundaries. And I know we've had a chance to discuss it, and I'm supportive of it, but given that that's the one employee contract that we as a council oversee, I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware and comfortable and had it up for discussion if they wanted to discuss, but if we don't need to, I'm okay with that too.
Okay. Now, seeing... Okay. We'll start down the end. Matt, could you please read the be it ordered for 122-24?
Absolutely. Be it ordered that the April 23rd, 2024 consent agenda be adopted.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Six to zero. All right. Our next item is the public hearing for this evening on licensing amendments for cannabis growers cultivation facilities. Let's see, we're going to open a public hearing, and then we'll take the matter of discussion back up to the council. Is there anyone here that would like to comment on the item that's on the agenda, which is an amendment to how we license cannabis growers and cultivation facilities? This is a public hearing. All right. Not seeing anyone raise their hand. We'll close the public hearing and have an introduction of the item, which actually we already had an introduction item, an explanation of the item from Caroline.
I just asked my flag under the radar again. So we talked about this a couple of weeks ago when you first adopted the cannabis establishment license. We picked a number that we thought was a little bit in excess of the current establishments that we had. Once it was adopted and the registration process started, we realized that of our two facilities, they have multiple cultivators in those locations. So we had gotten five applications for licensing for cannabis cultivation facilities. So we brought back to you a proposed amendment, which you have before you tonight to raise, keep the cap for manufacturing at four, because we only got two, but increase the cap for cultivation licenses from four to six. That would accommodate the current growers that we are aware of in Freeport seeking licensing and room for one more. Also in the language, we added some clarification as to what happens when the council changes the license number. So with this change or any future changes, if you increase it, it clarifies that we basically go back to, or Chris nicely, it goes back to the public notice process, 30-day accept applications, and then we treat them. I mean, it also addresses what happens if we get more applications than we have available. So now you will have, if you adopt this, you'll have two more available. If we get three, there's a clearer lottery process that we'll go into to address those. Happy to answer any questions. There's been no changes since you set the hearing.
I preface this by knowing that we've talked about this a lot, and I appreciate that. And also, perhaps I'm forgetting something from our last meeting about this, but this was the first step. Were we still pursuing the dispensary, I believe it was dispensary license?
Yes. So the council, we had their comment that somebody wanted us as a municipality to pursue the dispensary due to the workload of the planning board. It wasn't something the council was interested in designating, but like any property owners, they had the ability to come and apply for a zoning amendment. So they did submit some language and make application for a zoning amendment to add the dispensary use. We've had a little bit of a challenge getting some information for the Office of Cannabis Policy at the state, so we are waiting for some clarification on that. But the planning board will be having a discussion on that at the May 1st meeting, and then if they want to go forward, they'd have a public hearing. But they're doing that as an applicant-driven item.
Any other questions about this slight amendment to our cannabis licensing? All right. Darrell, could you please read item number 124-23?
Sure. Be it ordained that amendments to Chapter 66 Cannabis Establishment Licensing ordinances to increase the number of cannabis cultivating facility licensing from four to six be approved.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Be opposed? Six to zero. Thank you. Got that, Chris? All right. The next two items on our agenda are setting public hearings for our next meeting on May 7th. So tonight is not the public hearing itself, but an introduction of the items so that we can encourage participation at the public hearing on the 7th. The first one has to do with our shellfish conservation ordinance, and the second one has to do with some zoning amendments regarding building height standards. Let's see, we'll get it into, onto the floor for conversation. Joanna, could you please read the item?
Be it ordered that a public hearing be set for May 7th, 2024 at the town council meeting starting at 6:00 PM in Freeport Council Chambers, 30 Main Street, for amendments to Chapter 32 Shellfish Conservation Ordinance to add procedures for an apprenticeship license program, amend the lottery procedures for unissued licenses, and to add a license fee reduction program.
Second. All right, it's been moved and seconded. Charlie, once again, we are going to hear from you, and we're finally going to take action here at our next meeting, but we're just introducing this item now. Thanks for your work on getting this to this point.
Yeah, no problem. So we briefly discussed this a couple of weeks ago at the workshop, but I'll just, there's obviously a number of changes that are in Chapter 32, but I'm going to kind of hit on the two larger ones that are, have more of the nuts and bolts to it. The first one is the adoption or the proposal for an apprentice program. In a nutshell, this would allow five license holders to act as a sponsor to an apprentice that they could choose between the ages of 14 and 32, I believe. And this is kind of an attempt to get folks into the program who are going to more or less utilize their license more than how it has been working with our typical, typical lottery program. I would say, you know, one out of every five licenses that are given out through the lottery are fully utilized. So the commission kind of wants to see a more, you know, generational kind of heritage with family members and stuff like that. So folks that are actually going to utilize their license. So let's see, in a two-year period, they have to work a total of 100 tides or a minimum of 100 tides with their sponsor. And with that completed, they will be eligible for a commercial shellfish license issued to the town. And they are, the Shellfish Commission is proposing a $200 fee for that license annually for that apprentice license, and that's consistent with just a regular resident commercial license as well. So that's the first big one. I can answer a couple of questions if anyone has any on, on that, or nor I can move right on.
Yeah, keep going. I don't see any hands up.
The other one is moving our conservation program into a volunteer program where you actually receive a license fee reduction. So in the past, each license holder was required to perform 12 hours of conservation in order to renew their license. The commission, as well as our town attorney, has advised us to kind of shy away from this program just because it's kind of some gray areas with certain labor laws if someone were to get hurt while they're performing their conservation. And just to add on that, a lot of the things... And just to add on that, a lot of the things that we previously did in the last, you know, 30 years, such as we put in a big effort with green crab trapping and brushing the flats, which is where, you know, you put pine boughs in the mud to attract spat. And these methods have actually been proven since to be not effective. So, you know, rather than to kind of mandate this in order to renew someone's license isn't a great approach. Let's see. So like I said, the commission, if, let's say, the commission has certain activities or a grant, or I need assistance with water quality issues, I would be able to choose or have a way of choosing license holders to assist me. And then if they perform that work, they could actually receive a license fee reduction when they come in and renew their license.
Okay. Joanna?
I feel like your workshop presentation a couple of weeks ago was very eye-opening, and I just want to thank you for sharing some of those thoughts with us. I also wanted to ask, on Section 401, Number 3, establishing a perpetual shellfish conservation fund, could you say more about that?
Yeah. So right now, I believe the Shellfish Commission has awarded $3,500 for pretty much any sort of conservation work, whether it's, you know, survey work or water quality. And we actually have a surcharge on our license base fee, which is $30 per person that will go into a water quality account. And I think this isn't really changing anything, adding that language. It's just to kind of make sure that the commission is, you know, awarded funds annually, and that's, you know, solid in the ordinance. And we do have a, that water quality count, we are keeping up on our water quality in recent years. We really haven't touched that, and it's getting to the point where we do have a significant amount in there. So I know the commission has talked about using portions of that in other ways, which we haven't fully discussed, but I'm sure we'll get to that and run it by the powers that be if it needs to go through.
All right. First, hang on. Darrell, you're all set, Darrell?
I'm all set.
Okay. Dan?
Has the state been through these changes to the ordinance, and are they okay with everything?
Yeah. They're kind of the overseeing power of any ordinance change that we go through, it's Department of Marine Resources, and they've looked at everything. And a lot of towns are actually, I mean, it's kind of caught wind that we're actually thinking of an apprentice program and looking to adopt this. So it's kind of caught traction in some of the surrounding towns, which is nice.
That's great.
So it's kind of similar to what, you know, if folks are familiar with like the lobster fishery, how, you know, that apprenticeship program works. We're only doing five right now, and I, you know, we're just going to see how it goes in the next two years and, you know, learn from it. If it works, great. That's great.
My other question, I don't know if it's for Sophie or for Charlie, but that mechanism of allocating funds to the commission and accruing through the years seems unique. I don't know that we do that for any other committee or commission that we have. Is there a reason historically that that was the case for this one?
I don't know about history. I know that that is an unusual thing to bind the council to an allocation. When I look at what this commission is doing, though, my sense is that it's a very small amount, and the idea of allowing it to accrue over time is to allow it to take on some bigger projects. The thing that the council might consider, if you wanted to, would be to cap that and make it discretionary after a first amount, you know, after an amount has been reached. That would be...
Yeah, I can add on to that, too. In the past, before my time, we did, the commission did spend, I think, a significant amount of money on looking at the buffer area for the sewage treatment plant and how water flows and the hair seed get affected, you know, certain closures. So when you get a third party to come in and do that sort of work, it is very, very pricey. So it might, you know, take us 10 years to get to a number that, where if we had to do something significant like that, we actually had some funds to put forth at that, so.
I might suggest that we can maybe ask Charlie to bring that particular item back to the Shellfish Commission and have them come forward with a recommendation. I would have no idea what that dollar meant to be, for instance. So I'd love to have some input from them. Darrell?
Excuse me. Backing up Charlie to the number five for the apprentice program. Why do we have a number on it? I'm saying we ought to establish the apprentice program. If you have six or eight, that's awesome. It seems like a lot of work, and it's a lot of work for you to come back here, say, next year. You're lucky enough to get six people interested in that. So maybe we ought to just establish it, in my opinion, not have a number tied to it so you can have your ebbs and flows without having to come back for an ordinance change every time.
Yeah, I think the number five was, well, there's obviously, we've been back and forth on this for a number of months, but it's, A, the pressure on the resource, you know, we're just kind of starting out with five to see how the numbers look, and it's kind of, we felt was a manageable number, not only as far as pressure on the resource, but just enforcement-wise, you know, they have to be in the same cove as their sponsor. And so just on my end, we just thought it was a manageable number. But, you know, like I said, it's a two-year program, and if it works out, you know, we get positive feedback. And so, like I said, this is the first time a town has really tried it on the shellfish side of things, so it's...
It's exciting. I thank you for...
Yeah, I think you brought it up in the past, too. It'd be nice to see some turnover where folks are actively, you know, utilizing their licenses.
Congratulations to get that, and the commission to you to bring it forward. Thank you.
Great. Any other questions? So this will make for a wicked fast public hearing in my 7th, since we're grilling you right now, Charlie.
I think it'll be, you've seen me for worse, I think.
Yeah. That's great. So do you have anything that you need from us to be ready for that public hearing on the 7th, so this can...
I don't believe so, no. Nope. Just see, great.
Thanks very much. Appreciate your time sharing this with us, and we'll be ready to take action on that after the public hearing on the 7th.
Great. Thank you.
We do. Yep. So we have a motion on the floor to set the public hearing. Has already been read. All those in favor of setting the public hearing?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion carries. We're on for the 7th. Our next item is item number 125-24, another public hearing to set on May 7th. This one is about some changes to our land use ordinance regarding building height standards, and Assistant Planner Cecilia Smith is going to walk us through what this item is and what we're going to be looking at on the 7th. Cecilia?
Yes. So hi. This is a pretty simple zoning text amendment. The specific change would just be to remove this limitation on the numbers of stories, which is currently limited to three, in particular in the Village Commercial One District. The maximum height limit of 45 feet would not change. It has been identified that having this limit on the number of stories can be a significant barrier to certain types of development, including development that we might actually want to see downtown, such as parking lot redevelopment, or housing, or things such as having parking in the first floor, underground floor level, and then, you know, building continuing upstairs, or having underground parking. Therefore, the planning board concluded that, you know, removing the number of stories, that limit on three, while keeping the maximum building height to 45, would be, you know, a pretty simple fix to that, to remove that particular barrier. So in terms of the process, the planning board held two meetings in which this item was discussed. The first one was in March, and it was just to introduce the item. And then we held a public hearing on April 3rd. We published the required public hearing notice on the Times Record, and we also sent about 200 letters to people that would be, property owners that would be affected by this change. This recommendation was made also as part of that Housing Task Force. It was one of the items that they recommended. Also, the FEDC Board recommended this as well. And then finally, you know, it does align with the Downtown Vision Plan. And one thing I want to point out, because it can be a little confusing, is that because of the way we define building height, just so people in town who might be listening to this and might not be aware, understand, it is possible that you might have buildings that are taller than 45 feet, and that's because we measure the building height based on the average of the grade. So if a building is built on a very sloping type of property, you know, we're going to cut the average. So it's possible that in some areas, you will see buildings that are taller than 45, but that's because, on average, they need to be up to 45 feet. And also to keep in mind is that because the Village Commercial One District is under the design review, then those standards would still apply, that level of review. Yeah. And then if you have any questions, happy to answer them.
Hypothetically, not saying this could happen, might happen, but just in the realm of possibilities, could there be an amendment or an adjustment at the public hearing to adjust the actual building height distance from 45 to something perhaps a little bit higher? Or would that have to go back to the, is that a substantial amount? Is that an item that would require a planning board change?
I'm not sure what our ordinance would say. But, you know, I will note that we are currently working on updating the design review. So these conversations are going to happen when we work on updating the ordinance, and these conversations are going to happen, we're getting some public feedback. So it's interesting that the Downtown Vision Plan, you know, recommends much higher buildings. However, we saw that there was some reluctance from members of the public when there were projects proposed based on height. So whether or not, maybe Caroline will probably know, it's feasible, you know, you might want to get some public input for that.
Okay.
Yeah, but changing that overall height, the numerical measurement's not something the planning board talked about. I think it would be substantive, so it would need to go back to them. They won't be talking about the building height numeric number in design review. Design review will be more aesthetics. Who knows where we'll end up? It could be compatibility, but that is a separate regulation. I think I would advise going higher until we get design review figured out. One or two more weeks till all the RFPs are due, so we're getting close.
Great. Thank you. I just want to get that clarified.
Yeah, and some members of the planning board did indicate that interest. So it's something that is definitely on their minds.
Any other questions for Cecilia about setting this public hearing, about this minor text amendment change for May 7th? All right. See, where are we up to? Eric, I think it's up to you.
Need to read the be it ordered?
Yes, please read the item.
Be it ordered that a public hearing be set for May 7, 2024 at the town council meeting starting at 6:00 PM in Freeport Council Chambers, 30 Main Street, to discuss amendments to Section 413 Village Commercial One, VC One, District of the Freeport Zoning Ordinance Regarding Maximum Height Standards.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. We've had an explanation. Any other questions before we set this public hearing for May 7th? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, six to zero. Our next item is item number 126-24. This is to consider action relative to adopting some recommendations from the ad hoc task force on housing. We've seen those a couple of times now before tonight's meeting. There's a formal item in the packet agenda which specifies actions to take. I'm looking for it right now. No, it's right there. So there's a listing of particular items with some background on each listed in the memo, as well as the worksheet, which was circulated to you all, as done by Brett, our Economic Development Director and all-around advocate for these items. So tonight is to move the first of these priorities to an action, which then delegates to giving direction to the staff in various places to start working on these items as a council priority. So it sort of completes the arc of what the Housing Task Force list of priorities started out as, in terms of getting them ready, airing them out, having some inputs, circulating them here in informal matters for fine tuning, and now moving them forward for specific recommendations to staff. The next loop around that arc would be for those to make their way through our change process, whether it's going through the planning board or directly to an ordinance change to move things forward. Brett is with us this evening. Thank you, Brett, for staying. I don't know if I've left anything out. Is there anything to add, Brett? Maybe just make your way up to the podium if there is.
Brett Richardson, economic development function here in town. John laid it out really well, just a real quick recap of the action items for tonight, essentially underscoring the presentation that Cecilia just made around eliminating the story limit. The Housing Task Force supports that strongly. That's an important one. Gathering more data, you know, we've had discussions here around the impact of different types of housing, both fiscally and on infrastructure and assets in town. So honoring that and doing some more research to create an inventory, understand school kids per unit and some of those key metrics that will impact costs. And then setting a couple of work groups to advance a couple of key policies, one being the Dog Bone Geography, which is, we'll talk about it a little bit later, too, I believe, but largely downtown, south to Main Beer Company on Route 1, adjacent to the unique transit assets that Freeport has. Complex opportunity there around infrastructure investment, land use, and then also fiscal, potential fiscal tools that we could use to get the right kind of development. So taking this from a conceptual and embedding it within the town functions to dig into that and come back with some recommendations. And then similarly, on the TIF policy. The TIF policy was created in 2010. It's older. It's due to be updated, especially as we think about adding commercial housing as part of that priority investment pool. So those are four action items that the task force wants to elevate now relative to the other efforts that are ongoing, that that spreadsheet that John alluded to kind of maps out how these fit with other activities in town.
So thanks, Brett. We're making clear our directions to generate opportunities and lower barriers to create more housing. These are not the specific changes to the ordinance. That has to go through a process and be worked out, including some public hearings. But what we're doing, in my opinion, I think, and I'd love to hear from others, what we're doing is we're elevating the gravity of the housing issue in our community, making it council priority, which gives a clear indication to staff and our boards and commissions about such priority, so that we can be orienting towards that trajectory. And specifically, one of the tools that we have available to us is the TIF, and so we can update that language as it goes through its review process. So the Dog Bone is an example of an area that we could consider. That is not under a recommendation this evening to adopt some particular TIF. I just want to make that clear. This is an illustration of if we were to create such a district, this is what it could do. Brett's got an enormous amount of data of what that would mean financially and programmatically for those parcels if we were to adopt such a thing, and what the potential might be for directed development in those areas. So it's a very exciting tool, and we want to be able to have the toolbox up to date underneath us when we get to those particular items. So that's the effort for adopting the recommendations this evening, is to put the stamp council priority on these so that staff can move forward on bringing us the various elements as they make their way through our ordinance change and policy change.
Just a quick logistical question. The agenda says we've got four items, but I only see three, so I just want to make sure we're not missing one. Are those the three? Four action items, three strategies. Is that...
Yeah, we have the height, the inventory, the Dog Bone work group...
And the TIF. Got it. Oh, I see. Four recommended near-term action items. Thank you.
One, two, three, four.
I also want to stop. Perfect. Okay.
It's a enumeration.
Yeah, yeah.
Challenge there. One, two, one, two.
The, the second one, the inventory, is there a cost associated with that? And do we have enough funds allocated to do that?
I would say yes. I would also see this as part of the downtown, kind of the, not downtown, some of the money we've allocated from ARPA if we needed to. I, we have a student doing a senior project. I love Freeport High School, 40 hours of volunteer work, who we think we're going to work on pulling a lot of this data together. He's going to work closely with Brett. So we think we'll have a better idea of what will be needed after the end of his week.
In my day job, I just got to watch a collection of communities working with council of governments that's just north of us, starting in Brunswick, going to north, mid-coast council of governments. And they hired a consultant and just generated enormous amount of maps and detailed information, informational graphics and illustrations about what's happening with their communities, both in terms of housing and also population changes, taxation, all kinds of stuff. So that data is readily available for just up the street, and I think we can get some support and, and at least a sort of a topical sharing from, from that group to help us with what we're doing here in Freeport, since it's such a smaller subset. So I don't think it'll be a whole lot of money if we have to buy anything.
I think this is great. I know I've, I've been vocal on certain issues around the housing plan, and I guess my comment is, how do, some of these things are pretty straightforward, and it's going to follow our normal process. Like, it's, it's going to go, it's going to be, you know, a change to an ordinance, and it'll come back, and we'll deal with it that way. But some of these other things about like data collection or, you know, recommendations, how, how can we keep a balance between not getting in the way of progress, but not letting the work go too far ahead, and then having someone like myself say, well, wait a minute, did we consider this, or should we go back to the beginning? And I'd really like to see this included. I mean, is this like a regular check-in? Is it a standing item on an agenda once a month or two months, just to see the progress? We can ask some questions and kind of drive work? Because I don't want to get in the way, but I also don't want it to end up with a product that at the end we say, well, that really wasn't what we were thinking. Because that's not a good use of anybody's time.
Right, right. I would agree. Before Brett responds with the real answer, I'm going to give you my perception, which is that the, I, I believe that's one of the roles for the ad hoc housing task forces, to provide that check-in and that feedback. And that group is due to sunset in June, and we can talk about having them go further than that for, if nothing else, just that function. Secondly, with these recommendations, we can also, through council leadership, make sure that these are regular items on our agenda going forward by having various staff with Sophie's direction bring those, bring those updates forward. So what else do you have, Brett?
Just to underscore that, you know, the, the motion is to come back with a progress report in November. And then in addition to that, if you read into the weeds on the action items, under the TOD in particular, the two work groups, they have a pretty diverse representation across committees and boards. So the idea is we're spreading that communication out. We're gathering input from a variety of folks in the community, embedding ideas before they come. So that's, that, that's a great question, and hopefully we thought about that a little bit in terms of how we structure it.
Other questions? Incremental, but we're moving forward. All right, Dan, could you please read the item?
Be it ordered that the Housing Task Forces for recommended near-term action items be approved and endorsed as presented. Be it further ordered that the town manager be authorized to integrate the task force recommendations with current and future town activities to allocate appropriate staff resources necessary to carry out the task force recommendations, and to submit a status report on or around November 2024.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. So again, we're moving forward recommendations here. We're not making any direct changes to anything right now this evening, but putting the stamp of council priority upon them. Any other comments or feedback?
Just want to echo my support of council leadership, making sure that we're getting regular updates on this, on the agendas.
I, I will also, as we reach milestones or items of interest, include them in my report that you didn't get this week, but that will come back next week.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, six to zero. Thank you all. Great work. Thank you, Brett. Our next item, which is our last action item, before we get to other business discussion and our award-winning budget presentation, item number 127-24. This is to consider action related to the RSU 5 budget validation warrant and notice of election. Chris, you want to provide the background here?
Yep, so at the last meeting, you approved the warrant for the Region 10 construction project that we're going to vote in June. This is for the RSU budget validation portion of the election will hold June 11th.
So we don't have any authority to specifically review and amend and, you know, make changes to the RSU budget. They are, they are their own municipal entity to do such. They have finished that work and have presented that publicly, with some public votes coming shortly. However, as a participating member in the RSU, we have to endorse the ballot that's going in front of our residents, at least the Freeport portion of who are going to vote on this school budget coming up. I don't have those dates in front of me, but that's the action that we're taking tonight. Daryl?
I think I know the answer, but Chris, maybe you can refer it to again. I've been asked what the process would be to try to move the vote for the school budget to a November date as opposed to a June. Is that state law, or what is that?
It has to happen before the beginning of their fiscal year, which is July 1st.
So can that be done locally, or does it have to be done through the state?
Well, it's a, it's a local vote.
Yeah.
But their fiscal year is July 1 to June 30. They don't have their budget until it is approved by taxpayers. So they're in this, kind of the same place that we are, that their budget needs to be in place before the beginning.
But I do remember the year we moved from a calendar year to a fiscal year, and we just moved our funds. So it is possible, the question I had to me, there are some residents who would love to vote on it, to have more participation in the school budget in November as opposed to June. So that's the really crutch of the question.
I, I, so ultimately councils and schools can do a lot of things. I think that schools, state funding is a huge piece of their revenue. DD 214s come out in February. I know that the state requires, they're not 214s, that's something else. Yes, I'm sorry, all the people in the military. I, their 270 forms, whatever they are. They, I know that the state controls schools' charts of accounts and, and the methodology for their budget and what their budget, I, what their articles have to say, a lot more stringently than they control towns. I'm not saying it can't be done, Councilor Fournier, but I have never seen a school on a calendar year budget.
Oh, I, I'm not looking to change, all I'm looking out for is, as opposed to having a June election just for the school budget, and maybe a couple of other items. Could that be done in November, is what the citizens have been asking.
So I hate to say no. I would say it's a highly unfeasible situation, because our budget becomes finalized when the council adopts it. The school budget is not final until the voters approve it, because the voters elected to go to this referendum, which is a choice they make every three years. And so that really has to happen before they begin spending the money. So I don't, I'm having a hard time seeing how it would work structurally and operationally to do that, but it might be potential.
I'd be happy to ask the chair of the RSU board what that process might look like, so that you have information to go back to your constituents with. It's not the first time we heard about it. Not the first time.
We haven't heard about it before, and that might be helpful, just so people could get educated on that. I think, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
The, the timing is odd with the school year starting before an election, or then trying to get the budget information by November for a following school year. It's really very hard to predict census and therefore budgets and things like that. So that's why it doesn't work out very well. That's, you know, that's the, sort of the working answer, but in terms of what would actually be required to change it, I can go find that out.
Thank you, thank you, Joe.
If you could give that to me, I'm sure everybody has it.
Sure. All right, so Matt, I think we're back to you for reading item number 127-24.
Yep. Be it ordered that the town council authorize the RSU 5 budget validation referendum warrant and notice of election.
Second. All right, it's been moved and seconded. We're authorizing the warrant to go out that the school district RSU 5 has prepared. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, six to zero. We'll follow up with the RSU board chair. Our sixth order of business is a public comment period for those attending the meeting virtually. Do we have anyone visiting through Zoom?
I don't think we have anyone visiting through Zoom who wishes to make a comment.
Right, okay. So we'll move on to other business. We have two items this evening. One is, the first one is an introductory discussion on the map that you were just handed out. If you sort of hold it far away and cross your eyes, it looks like a dog bone, which is where the catchy name came from. So we're going to have a brief discussion about what this district may look like. Again, this is not the first time we've heard this, but it's also taking, taking action to, to start moving it forward and get some velocity, let's say.
Dogbone or destination to?
No, this, they.
They are related.
This, this will be related and, and.
So, yeah, I'll just provide a little bit of context. Thanks for that, Dan. The, the discussion about what Brett's going to talk about here shortly is the opportunity to create something that looks like the map that we have in front of us. And the mechanism may end up being, doesn't have to be, but may end up being a redesignation of the destination TIF that we already have in place, that is in its 19th, or about to enter its 19th year of its 20-year life. And so recent legislation from the main legislature has amended municipal TIF policy to allow town governments to repurpose expiring TIFs and to redirect them with some particular parameters that Brett's going to explain. And so one of the opportunities that we may have is to consider essentially reprogramming or reformatting the destination TIF towards something that looks like the map that we have in front of us. And I'll introduce Brett from there. Sophie, you have some additional context.
You did my whole job for me. It was really great. Brett and I have been talking about this a little bit. With the new legislation, a lot of towns actually have not been in a place to be able to take advantage of this ability to renew for an additional 20 years. So by renewing for an additional 20 years, if we took what's outlined in the Dog Bone right now, and we created our own transit-oriented development district, we would start with its current value, and it would be the incremental growth from when we created the TIF. So we'd have to wait for development to come and growth to happen before we had money. The ability that we have with the destination Freeport TIF, because it's in the village and it is proximal to the train station, well, it's, I think it's overlapped by all three of the circles that are in the top of the Dog Bone. We would have the ability to renew that TIF for 20 years, maintaining the current increment, which would include the almost $600,000 tax credit enhancement agreement that we are paying right now. That's money that you don't see in the budget, but it is part of the increment, and the almost $200,000 that currently flows into the budget. So we could renew it for 20 years. If we renewed it, 75% of it, of the increment that we retain, would have to be used for transit-oriented development, or to support affordable housing. Those are the two options you have. With that other 25%, we could create a development program that might say general economic development, marketing, whatever the issues facing council were at that time. In order to move this forward, it would probably take, we would really want to think carefully about this, so I think we would want to start the process a good year to eight, 18 months to a year in advance. And Brett and I are already starting to do some things in our brainstorming that kind of presuppose some kind of transit-oriented development happening within this Dog Bone. And we want to check in with council, because we're making some assumptions. We've had some workshops, we've seen some data, but we really haven't come before council and said, so folks, are you interested in us pursuing this to bring you back some recommendations and some suggestions for after this TIF expires? And that's the end of my slide. So Brett, you're up.
All right. So real quick, at a real high level, planning level, right? This land here that encompasses downtown, the three overlapping circles are about 200 acres combined. The blue corridor that connects down to Main Beer Company is about 115 acres. And then the radius around Main, the Main Beer Company Breeze Stop is about 130 acres. So those circles represent a quarter-mile radius around a transit stop. Combined, that land is about 450 acres, which is about 2.5% of the entire land in the town. So you can see that inset in the top left. The Dog Bones highlighted that. So infrastructure's largely already there. We had Warden Curran do a high-level opinion of cost. It would take about 25 million bucks to do all the infrastructure in that geography. A lot of it's provided by utilities, not the town. So the town's share of that, to provide pedestrian, trails, all the amenities that our residents want, would be relatively affordable, considering how much land is available to develop there, and how much fiscal impact that could have for the town. So the point being is that if, if we can use 2.5% of the land in the town for smart development that supports the downtown vision, this is largely the geography of the housing catchment area that the principal group identified, you're conserving the rural character of Freeport, because you're putting the development in the right spot on the existing infrastructure, and highlighting it there, which will generate foot traffic downtown, it'll help solve the housing crisis that we have in our area, and build the vitality that we all want to see. So that's kind of the high-level stuff. The geography is, like I just said, quarter-mile around the transit stop. It's about a mile in between the ends of the Dog Bone. So it's with the right kind of infrastructure, a bike or on foot, you can cover that in, you know, 15 or 25 minutes, and really help workforce too, for our employers. So that's kind of the high level here, is that this really came from the downtown vision and the idea of, okay, how do you implement that? How do you put the right tools in place? And this is ready-made from the state, you know? Freeport has unique transit assets with the Down Easter, the Breeze Stop, and the proximity to the downtown infrastructure. So relatively small amount of land, that could have a really big impact for Freeport. And the other thing to keep in mind too, is the development program and how that could be used. Housing fund, it could be used to offset equipment for public safety as a percentage of the whole. It could be used for infrastructure, stormwater, pedestrian amenities, connectivity. It could be used for transit facilities, additional bus stops, or a local circulator bus that we've talked about in town. So TOD is a buzzword, Transit Oriented Development, that the state really wants to support. If we're talking. If we're talking about grants from the federal government around infrastructure and climate resiliency and getting people out of cars, this is the type of language that they're going to understand and it's going to make Freeport competitive for that type of federal funding as well. So this is, this is forward-thinking, but the TOD concept has been available in the state for a period of time. Freeport is just uniquely positioned to take advantage of it. And it's also, you know, we've talked a little bit about this, almost like an accordion. You could create a district that would be just the downtown, right? If that's what the appetite were. You could create a district that includes the corridor. You could include a district that goes all the way down to Main Beer Company. We could do them as, at one lump sum. We could do them incrementally as the development grows. But the thought process here is it's a relatively small amount of the land. It's big enough to absorb housing and other types of development in proximity to downtown. But it also isn't so big that it'll invite sprawl and spread us out too far where we lose efficiency. So we've been, you know, talking about this at the FEDC level for a while. It really is a tool that could advance many of the goals of the community from the downtown vision to housing. And Freeport's uniquely positioned to take advantage of it, especially with the dynamics that the town manager just laid out, that we could take advantage of, you know, the original assessed value from 20 years ago and have that increment grow. It also includes Depot Street in the area that we just had a public hearing on to increase the height to allow for more development. So it's really, I think, you know, well-positioned to advance the goals. And I'm excited to work with the Dogbone Work Group that you all just created to sort of flesh this out and, and move it forward on the 18th month timeframe that Sophie just laid out.
Daryl.
I like the, the concept. Could that dog bone, we talked earlier about the transportation, particularly Route 1 South.
Yep.
And this was a year and a half or so ago, Brett, and I'm wondering, is that area, why it's not there? Could it be there? Because I think there's maybe other opportunities that have been identified that may, we want to look at that, or could we add it later on?
Yep. I, from a practical staff level, the way I would encourage you all to think about it is that, Sophie just mentioned a few minutes ago that if you, there's a timeframe on these districts. You can go up to 30 years. And if you set the district in place without projects and it takes you a couple of years to get the pipeline built, all of a sudden that 30-year window is now 20, so you lose some of the impact. So the way I would encourage us to approach it would be to essentially plant a flag around where we want this to happen and then use that to go out and attract the right kind of projects, get that pipeline started so that when we do set that time on that 30-year window, you've got demand built up, a pipeline that's going to take advantage of it, benefits that will accrue to the town. So I think that if we had a general plan about how we wanted to go about this, that we can message to the market and say that we're serious about this. We're adjusting the land use to allow for greater density in the right areas. We're, we're updating the TIF policy to allow for the right type of projects that are going to move the town forward. And we're making infrastructure plans with Public Works and other departments in the town, partnering with the DOT to make those happen. Then we've got something that we can go out, build that pipeline, and then take it as it comes. We could, you could do a TOD down here. You could do then, five years later, after we've built that out, do a TOD down the corridor. And then, you know, the idea here too, Daryl, though, is if we create too big of a geography right up front, you might have projects that are spread out and you might not get the impact. So we're keeping our, our powder dry, so to speak, on other areas. It doesn't mean that if we had a property owner in a different area, that could be that anchor for a new district, that we wouldn't pursue that. But just from a planning level perspective, if you were going to start with a conceptual plan to take out to the market, being close to the downtown, with the downtown vision, having strong consensus around development in this area, this is where I would start. Doesn't mean we couldn't do others, though.
So if I understand it right, Brett, this can be grown?
Yep.
It doesn't lock us into this one plan for 20 years or whatever?
Correct.
So if in fact we find that Route 1 South, or maybe Route 1 North, who knows, you know, where we're going, we could expand this program?
We could. And just to be real clear, the whole Route 1 corridor is, is served by metro. So it's a transit corridor. And the real benefit in addition to the new bells and whistles that Sophie just laid out is that the Transit Oriented Development TIF District is exempt from the 5% land cap and the 5% valuation cap. So towns can't TIF their whole geography. They can't TIF their most valuable places. There's a fight, but the TOD is exempt from that. So in effect, Freeport could TIF its most valuable areas without preventing other projects from happening in the future. So it's a flexible tool. Freeport's perfectly positioned to take advantage of it. It comes down to the how and where and when.
Eric.
I, I understand how you've lined out the transit hubs and the, the corridor in between that you're sort of augmenting with pedestrian, bike, trails, all of those things. I'm just wondering about that corridor in the middle. I'm wondering if we're missing a joint in the dog bone? Because there is another Breeze Stop right in the middle there that's the corporate, L.L. Bean corporate offices. But we don't have a radius around that, and I'm just wondering if you could talk about why?
That's a good point. It's easy to make that change and update it.
I, just because I, I think the, the fact that you, while you wouldn't have a lot of development on the L.L. Bean side of, of Route 1.
Right.
Between Meeting House Road and Independence Drive and Summer Street, you've got more.
It wouldn't look like a dog bone, though.
I know, I know.
It's corrupt the branding.
Dog leg. It would happen, it would happen.
Yep.
Yeah, that's right.
Broken.
The elbow. No, it's a good point. Thank you.
I, I, I share Daryl's opinion about the, considering, looking at Route 1 South. And I've had lots of conversations over the years about what might be possible, could be possible down there. Certainly, the opportunities are much broader because of the open nature of that area. And it's still actually surprising to me with public utilities available right there in Route 1, why things haven't really happened. So there's something else that's going on there that we could get at. And so I, I, I'm, I'm really happy to support this entirely. But I also wouldn't want it to preclude the opportunity to consider a Route 1 South Development District, which could eventually include a TIF once we do a little bit more planning and, and sort of smithing about what's going to have to happen down there in order for that to be successful. You know, the, the boatyards have figured it out. So we got to do something, you know, that, that, that they're doing, obviously, because they figured out how to put projects down there and put their businesses down there. But we could have a lot more vibrancy with a much broader, diverse activities. At the same time, I also hear the forward-thinking planners in my other ear saying, don't create a, a competition for your downtown before downtown even gets its legs underneath it in terms of all of the great things that you're talking about. So there's a lot, there's a lot there. And I think that's one of the reasons why this one makes good sense to focus here, not to preclude an opportunity about what to do with Route 1 South, but have it be on a slightly different timeframe so that we don't create where we're competing against ourselves and eating our own appetites here about where we want to see things happen. Other questions or feedback for Brett? Matt?
Can you just walk through the economics of, of redoing this TIF again in terms of? I just want to make sure I understood the point about where we set the benchmark valuation. Is it when we started the TIF, the original one? I just, I just want to get a sense of the scope in terms of what resources we'd have at our disposal to start incentivizing projects? And then what it would look like as we worked through, you know, the first five, 10 years of, of a new TIF?
So at a high level, and Sophie, jump in here if you need to. You know, the, the original assessed value would, would have been set 20 years ago. So that's significant amount of projects since then. And all the value that was created since that original assessed value would continue to accrue to the TIF fund. In addition to that, you would have the ability to TIF that 67-unit project that was approved. You would have the ability to add any other new project that came in to that new value, which would give the town a lot of flexibility to use the current TIF revenues to do the activities that we've done traditionally with some adjustments and tweaks. But then additional resources to do more in the right kind of things that we want to vet through the working group and the TIF policy updates and all that to make sure that, really the key here is to marry land use that allows the right type of density with the fiscal tools to help create the sidewalks and the sewer connections and all those things that we know that we need with, with, with the policy that, in a process that welcomes that type of development. So if we, we have to get some ducks in a row, like Sophie said, 18 months or so and that table with the housing recommendations, all those things really, if we did this right, would fall into place as we set that TIF in place.
Daryl.
I don't know if Brett or Sophie can answer this. The criticisms that I've received in years past, when the TIF districts were identified, expenditures could only happen in those areas. So people in the outlying areas, the community said, wait a minute, you know? I'm kind of not getting a benefit, particularly in some of the downtown TIFs that were done. So if I heard you right, Brett, which I'm kind of pleased to hear that, they're opening up where some of the assets of the TIF that is generated could be spent on, whether it's fire apparatus or public safety building or something like that. Is that true?
So, yeah, there was a change in statute a couple of years ago that would allow us to use a certain percent on public safety buildings. Not operation, but public safety buildings. So I think that with this particular TIF, we're going to be a little bit more limited than we might otherwise be because it's a renewal of an already renewed TIF. But when I did the math, especially if we get development, we might be able to use some of this to offset some costs related to debt on a public safety rehab or. But it always comes down to, Daryl, you've got to be able to prove that what you're spending your money on, if it's not pure economic development, how that, that's the need. So here, when we're talking about significant increases in the density of the population and housing, increasing housing units within this area, makes it really easy to make the argument that we have far out, we will far outgrow our public safety building. But the reason that Brett and I are going to need a little bit more time with this is because there are a lot of arguments that we're going to have to put in place. When we talk to the attorney about the renewal, we will be one of the first communities to actually utilize this tool. So we're going to be breaking some ground, which is always fun.
Dan.
A couple of questions. Renewing the TIF versus starting a new TIF? So if we renew the existing one, we get 20 more years? And if we start a new one, do we get 20 or 30 years?
We would get 30. The issue being that you're starting over. So your increment on year one is zero.
Right.
And then you've got to build. So this gives us a jumpstart, which I think is one of the reasons why Brett and I are thinking to keep it smaller so that we can actually make some of the, the very costly improvements because we've got that jumpstart.
More money sooner, but not for as long.
Yep.
And then for the existing credit enhancement agreement, does that expire and is that going to be renewed as well? Or does that full amount revert back to the town after the 20 years?
So that actually expires in 2026. And so we actually have two full years after that of payments that will come to the town to be used for allowable, you know, the things that we said we would use it for in the development program.
So the total existing TIF, roughly $800,000 a year, $600,000 that goes out to CEA, $200,000 goes to the town in the TIF fund. After two, after 2026, all 800,000 goes, if we renew, all 800,000 goes into a TIF fund?
If the value all stays the same.
Right.
Then yes.
And is there a cap? Does, can that value grow from where it is today to 900,000, a million? Again, okay.
So.
With the increment on new development that you're putting into that renewed TIF district?
In addition to, but the property value of the stuff that's already there goes up.
Correct.
Already, that would also increase the amount.
That's right.
Yep.
We're growing money.
Yeah. Well, we're diverting money, right?
Yeah, well, but I mean, we're growing money for the uses within the TIF program.
Right, and not making it available for new uses outside the TIF program.
So this is what I'm going to suggest with that, if I was going to put on a different hat, that in Freeport, you, we lose about 60 cents on the dollar in, when things go back on the regular rolls. So when we keep all the money here to use on building infrastructure and meeting the goals that the council has, if those goals are in place and would be done anyway, you're actually having to tax less to do the work. I don't know how well I'm saying that. I haven't been a finance director for six months.
Spending it from a TIF fund is cheaper than spending it from a general fund.
It is, if there are things that you would do anyways.
Anyways.
If you're making up projects that would be nice, then no.
Right.
Right?
Right, because that's additional new spending that you've just dreamed up because you've got a checkbook that can cover it.
Yeah, but if you would put them in the budget anyway to, to get $600,000 on the general fund has a better financial impact than the other way because of the money that we lose.
Yeah, I, I guess that's sort of the spirit of the question is, if there's $800,000 currently available per year after 2026, and to date, we've been spending $200,000 a year in economic developments, which makes sense to continue doing, do we already have earmarks for that additional $600,000 windfall that we're going to get? Or would we have to dream up affordable housing projects and other things to consume that $600,000?
So I don't think we have to dream up anything. I think you're going to find that right now we're running the, the TIF district owes the general fund some money because we have allowed it to go into the hole, knowing that we're going to get money after the credit enhancement agreement. But some of the things that need to happen along this corridor are multimillion-dollar.
$25 million worth of stuff, yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, that's why I feel comfortable saying, we're going to, if we're going to build sidewalks to make it work, we're going to build them anyway.
Yeah, makes sense.
One of the items that could be considered, hang on, Daryl. Six or seven years ago, when we signed a power purchase agreement with the solar farm, we saw this coming and, which is why we negotiated an opportunity, a first right of option to purchase that solar farm coinciding with when this shows up. So that's one of the potential uses, which would dramatically reduce the town's operating expenses by taking away its electric bill. We'd own our own electricity for all of our facilities. So that's one, one example of what could happen. Daryl?
I think Sophie's up. Sorry, Daryl.
I don't know that we could do that out of the TIF fund. I don't know that that is a TIF-eligible expense.
Not, well, not out of the TIF fund, but in terms of what we could do with the windfall. If, if we didn't extend it and we did a different TIF, that money would, would.
No, that doesn't, that still lives in the development program fund and has to be used according to the, according to the.
The original TIF.
The original TIF. And we would have three years to expend it.
Okay, I thought we wrapped that up.
No windfills, sorry.
Daryl.
Back on my earlier arguments, if I understand what you're saying, Sophie, so we have a capital budget that includes maintaining existing sidewalks, which would fall within these infrastructure years, whether it's replacing the brick ones or whatever. So in fact, some of that money legitimately could be used to offset some of our expenses in our capital budget as an example where a lot of that comes out.
So we wouldn't say it that way, Daryl. We would instead say that the TIF allows us to do things like rebuild sidewalks, maintain a pedestrian-friendly corridor, build a multi-use path that encourages. a pedestrian-friendly corridor, build a multi-use path that encourages alternative transportation throughout the corridor, funds an internal shuttle bus that the business community is crying for, you know, those types of things that the council, if they had the funds, would likely want to fund. But once they're outside of the TIF district, you're now losing state money and also giving up, you know, 70, almost 70 cents on the dollar that comes in for outside agencies.
Just to underscore too, GP COG prepared a fiscal impact analysis. That was a council workshop a month or two ago, and I think largely demonstrated that if we do the land use right and we bring the right kind of projects in, that not only is there TIF benefits, but there's just general fiscal efficiency around building on existing infrastructure that's going to put the town in a stronger financial position than otherwise.
I ask a question. We are redoing our zoning. We are redoing how we do businesses in town. What I don't want to happen, and hopefully the answer is it won't happen, is that we have these roadblocks that we've experienced in recent past coming in. So I guess I want to make sure that our house is in order through our ordinances, through our planning processes. So when we want to have projects come in here, we do not put them through what we just did. So that's, that needs to go hand in hand with what we're doing here.
So it does. And in fact, Caroline and Brett worked on a wonderful grant application to the state of Maine that is entirely focused on bringing down barriers and educating the public on how to do business in Freeport. So everything from subdivision and site plan review, looking at zoning that makes sense and is appropriately sized for Freeport in a way that also we get to yes, right? That's the goal.
Fabulous, Brett.
Thanks. It's fun. I mean, it's easy. The town's set up for this. It's, it's easy.
Give yourself some credit.
Yeah. That entire design is because of Brett's effort. So all of those pieces that converge in the map and the planning and the sequencing, that's, that's Brett.
One thing I'm thinking about is the design review ordinance and how that interacts because all of these three, the top three kind of circles, some of them, some parcels are part of the design review and some aren't. So would there be sort of like a, maybe a developer would be more interested in avoiding this design review ordinance? Or would there be sort of like a, I don't know, like an incentive to.
Yeah.
Develop outside of it.
Caroline's already thought of that, so we're ready.
So I think you, you have two different things going on here. I think there are people that come to Freeport because we have been able to maintain a certain aesthetic and a certain amount of history and charm. But if you don't want that option, you remember that a couple of meetings ago, you just took all of this out of design review. So that kind of goes along to Daryl's thing. But you're right, some people will want, maybe will or won't want to go here. But the other thing you have here is lower, we lowered parking and you have a zero land per dwelling unit. So you might have design review, but we want growth there. We, we're supporting it more here and we have already supported it by doing those two other things.
So you've kind of created, like, someone can come in and kind of balance what they want to tolerate versus not want to tolerate?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not one's asking, so we have options.
Great.
Okay, we have our award-winning budget presentation to finish up our meeting. And I mean, I'm smiling when I say that, but it's true. Year after year after year, Jessica wins awards at her trade group for her budget presentation. So I'm prepared to be wowed.
And let's, and let's just be clear, when we say her trade group, we mean the National Governmental Finance Officers Association. And she's, I will tell you, I'm super impressed with the way she has worked this process and how open she's been. And I'm just going to turn it over to her and be thankful that I'm not a finance director anymore.
All of that and she's up against cake.
I know, right? Thank you.
So everybody should have received their budget books at the table tonight in front of you. So my presentation is really just going to be a brief overview of all the detail that you have in front of you. So we're talking about the proposed FY '25 operating budget for the town. In a quick snapshot, this slide before you gives you the current 2024 tax amounts and what we are projecting for 2025 and what the correlating mill rate impact would be. So to briefly take you through them, the Cumberland County tax, which, which has been set, is a $6,000 increase over last year, which would have less than a one cent impact on the mill rate. I'm going to skip RSU and we'll go to transit, which has also been set with an increase of $6,666 over last year, again, under a one cent increase to the mill rate. Bumping back up to the RSU 5, the last document I saw was a proposed increase of $1,453,052, which would be about 54 cents on the mill rate with existing valuation and, you know, all things equalize. In the town of Freeport, the municipal budget, we are currently looking at a levy increase of $819,810, which would be a 30 cent increase to the mill rate. So with all four entity impacts, we'd be looking at an 85 cent increase to the mill rate with these four components as presented. The next slide, we get into our budget expenditures. Our year-over-year budget is, has a projected increase of $1,158,535. To break down some of the major drivers of that, the largest component are our wages at $554,000. That includes pay scales, step increases, cost of living adjustment, some contractual wage changes, as well as some positional changes where we have the increased position of an assistant town manager, but we have the removal of the town engineer position. It includes $256,000 in benefits, which is an increase basically because we have filled full-time positions and we know what those benefits are going to be now. So there's the impact of that, as well as beginning in January, this past January of 2024, we had a 2.8% increase in our health insurance premium, which is actually very good, by the way. It also, this budget also adjusts, so the health insurance runs on a calendar year. So this, this 2%, 2.8% increase started January 1 of '24, will go through 12/31 of '24. And so the budget includes for a 5% increase beginning 1/1 of '25 for the remaining six A few more major drivers, there's an increase in paving and winter operations of $69,000. This is to do the hot topping. We talked about paving last year and we opted to pull money out of ARPA versus increasing the general fund with the understanding that at some point, we are going to have to increase the general fund to keep up with the operation of paving our roads based on that increased material cost, just to be able to continue to do the level that we're doing is costing more. We also have some regional services in this budget that have an impact of $26,600. That includes our dispatching service with Brunswick, as well as our shared animal control officer with Brunswick. And then there's another $80,450 that I kind of jumbled into miscellaneous. It includes increases in the solid waste tipping and hauling fees. Those come from EcoMaine. Our hydrant rental increases from the main water in the, in the sewer department. We have an increase in website maintenance and there's always an adjustment with Boston's Island. You know, we, we collect tax money for them and they get a 60% return of that, of that tax for their services and, and this, so it's all dependent on the valuations of the property, right? So it's, it increases just like the town does. And then moving on, so the revenue side is, so the first slide is kind of like the net impact of the, of the expenses and the revenues. So we just went through the expense side of that. The revenue side, projecting a $338,725 increase in revenues. And the primary drivers of those is an increase of $150,000 in excise tax, just between the cost of vehicles and what we're seeing come through the counter. You know, people typically renew their registrations. So, you know, we can kind of get a pretty good idea of what we're going to see the following year for, for excise revenue. I also have a $175,000 increase in interest income revenue. If you recall, we've been kind of in a slump with interest income, but we've made some investment changes. We have a larger return now coming. The environment, rate environment is better. So we're, we're earning more on our overnight account, which is what the majority of this is. So I'm able to kind of bump that up to, to pre-impact of COVID levels. And then there's also a minor $10,000 increase that the state is projecting with, with our revenue sharing component. So those are your major revenue drivers, which all, to say, nets down to that $819,810 municipal tax rate impact, which is a 12.37% increase in that municipal rate. Our FY '24 rate is 3.22 and we're proposing 3.52 for FY 2025.
Can I ask a question?
You sure can. Sorry, I didn't mean to hit that on you.
I'm assuming that both the revenue increase and the expense increase are conservative estimates. In fact, are you assuming that we will outperform those figures?
Um, there are a lot of people that would say I am a conservative estimator of revenues.
Perfect.
Which I am. I have come to that term and realization and acceptance. However, at the same time, just before Peter left and as well as into last year, I really stepped outside my comfort zone and started bumping some of these revenues up to what we were actually seeing for, for actuals come in. So your excise revenue, you know, if it, if it was up to me, I think I'm at 2.15 in this budget, I probably would still be at 2 million, right? Because that would be my conservative nature. Because ultimately, I can't guarantee that that's going to come in. And I'd rather be ahead of the game than have to make something up, right? So kind of a long story to answer, yes, there, there's a little bit of conservation with them, but certainly not as much as in, as in.
Got it.
Prior years. I, I would actually have a hard time swallowing being a little more aggressive with some of these revenue numbers. I think we will struggle to meet some of them. Others, I think we might do a little bit better on.
Great.
So expenses, you know, I, I don't know that I would, I don't know that I would say that I'm conservatively budgeting our, our expenditures. I think we've, we are asking for what's needed to perform the services that are being asked of us now, so that you're going to see some growth in some of these areas. That's why the, some of the, the impact to the wage increases is to be able to do a lot of the stuff that's being asked of us on.
This is probably for Sophie. So we look at that, I'm very pleased to see the increase in, while we're having furniture coming in. So that's, that's positive. Are we challenging other departments to look at other potential revenue sources? And I, and I agree, I like your conservative approach, but I think we also ought to be looking, you know, outside the box. So I hope, I hope we do challenge.
So I, I think we are challenging folks. I think that it's going to take a little bit more awareness of operations. Also, the Supreme Court just handed down a 9-0 decision that impact fees and some service fees are illegal. And so we are now kind of moving forward. So as an example, this budget, these numbers came out before we got the decision or we understood the decision. And I am not suggesting to Jessica that she remove $100,000 of revenue from this.
$150,000.
Hundred, sorry, $150,000 of revenue from this budget because I don't believe it's all of our fees. I think we need to go through that Supreme Court decision and get some guidance on what, how we can structure our fees and what it means moving forward. But I am, so I think, yes, I want to think creatively. I get nervous, Councilor Fornier, when you talk about that because I think you remember a time when we could make a half a million dollars on rents and a million dollars on, on rescue transfers that they aren't there.
And they aren't there. But also, you know, if we're not looking, and I know you're all looking, so that encourages us that, you know, there may be some small or, or something. And, and I think that's key to, you know, trying to be efficient.
And from a finance director perspective, I'll tell you, when I hear that, I don't disagree. You know, I, I think it's important to be aware of what's available, right? And, and what can help the community. But I am also very conservative in that I want to, I want to see a tried and true impact, right? Because I don't want people's tax rates to go like this year over year. So we may have, you know, unanticipated revenues come in, right, one year? And it may take me a few years before I build that line item actually into the budget because I want to make sure it's stable. You know, I want to make sure that it's stable for the community so that there's not these large swings that we got 50,000 one year, I budget for the next and we don't get it, right? So there's, for me, there's that balance that I look at with it. So you don't always see those outside-the-box thinking revenues because a lot of times they're, they're within that unanticipated miscellaneous revenue, which I actually did increase in this year's budget because we have been pretty consistent with what we've been able to bring in. Any other thoughts before I move on to the next slide? So the last biggest slide for, for your review is some considerations for this FY 2025 budget that are not currently within the proposed budget before you. And this is within your binder. It's the last page. Actually, if you, if you were to go to the Winslow Park tab, and it's the page before it, has all of these items listed with the exception of the, I made one change after I had printed your books. And the last line is, the senior property tax relief is not in your books, but it's on this presentation. So this is a list of items that are for your consideration to include in the FY '25 budget if you so choose. To go down them quickly, the Conservation Commission was looking at using the, I'm going to mess up the name, Marine Conservation Corp. group, looking, they, initially, when they requested, they said if there was grant money available, it'd be great to have them come back. We, I did not put them in the budget because we would be pursuing grant money for that if it's possible, as well as we have some existing ARPA money. if it's possible, as well as we have some existing ARPA money that's earmarked for this purpose as well. So it's more just for your information of what's out there, so you know what is being asked. There's also a request on the fire rescue side for a medic position at 95.7, which is about a four cent impact to the mill rate. The police is looking for a patrol position, which is about 115,000, which is just over a four cent impact. Library is looking for an additional part-time staff. That would be about 16,000 bucks and under a penny impact on the mill rate there. And then you have your list of your human service agencies that are either not included in the budget or not included to the level that they asked. For example, Oasis Free Clinic, we currently fund them with $1,000. Their request was for 1,750. So that's, you have the increment before you on this list. And the same with the snowmobile club. Their allocation is currently 1,050, I think, and they're looking for 1,100. Or I might be $50 off there on theirs, but they're asking for $50 more than they've been allocated in the past. And then the rest are ones, so the Meeting House Arts, the Freeport High School Scholarship, Southern Main Agency on Aging, the Farmer's Market, and then the one I grouped as miscellaneous, the Kennebec Behavioral Health, Northern Light Health, and Lifelight. Those are all items that were not funded last year in the general fund. So they're here for your consideration to include in. And, I'm sorry?
Chamber's giving us $2,500.
Well, so, yeah, funny enough. The chamber did not put in an outside agency request form as we started the process last year. So they did not put in a request form for funding. I did not get an opportunity before I realized that they didn't have one in to reach out. So we've been a longstanding contributor to the chamber, so I have left their 2,500 in. This would be if you would like to take it out. So because they were funded out of the general fund last year, I left them at that level. But yeah, that's what, that's why that looks funny. So if everything was said and done, and we added that senior property tax relief, we went middle ground and we did the 150,000. I know there was discussion between like 1 and 2, so we just did mid-ground to give you something to contemplate and see what the impact would be. If everything was done, which I assume we would not take out the 2,500 from the chamber, but if we did, it'd be a $425,000 increase to the budget before you, which would be about another 16 cents on the mill rate for the municipal side.
So, if I may, I just lost my sheet, but there is a method to the madness of how Jessica laid this out and put this in. The first four items, we actually made management decisions on. The first one was because there was already a pretty significant allocation. The next three are staff positions that were requested, and I, I did not support them being in here. Based on conversations with department heads of these departments, there were no fights. It was just, we don't, when I look at priorities right now, these might be good discussions next year, but for this year, I just, I didn't see the strong argument for them. Well, as strong as an assistant town manager and a HR director. Those were the... And then the last one that's not, that's on her list, but not on yours, which is why the numbers are different, and we will get you the new sheet, is the senior property tax relief. And that was more about wanting you guys to make, make sure you guys made an affirmative decision on what you wanted to do with that.
What's the sequence for adjustments on, you know, let's say, option A, we take a look at this list and make a suggestion, and then eventually have a vote to add or decrease something? What's, what's the sequence on that? Or how many, how many more times do we look at this before we're actually going to vote on it?
Oh, there you go.
You segue right into my last slide. So the upcoming schedule for budget discussion is as follows. So May 7 will be your next council workshop and meeting. And this is also where we will be offering up to the outside agencies to come and give a brief, I proposed a three-minute summary of their request to council and give council the opportunity to ask questions of the outside agencies that do choose to come before you, what you may have for questions for their appropriation. And then May 8, as department heads, we have a public information session here at council chambers in the morning from 7:30 to 8:30 a.m. for members of the public that may not be comfortable in a public forum, to come before and ask questions, that they can meet with department heads individually, in a non-public format, to ask their questions or get some information. And then we're followed, following that within a council workshop on May 21, which will be where further discussion can happen with the council.
That's why it's not a council.
And the public hearing on June 4, where members of the public that do want to speak and be heard in a public forum can come and give you their opinion and feedback on what's being discussed for the budget, with a targeted adoption date of June 18. And just to clarify, if a budget is not adopted before June 30, the budget as proposed is the budget that's in place until a decision is made. So the budget that you have in your hands is what would be forth coming unless, until a decision is made.
Jessica, in your schedule here, you have got the 7th and the 21st of May as workshops. Those are actually council meetings?
Yes.
Do you mean, do you mean a workshop during the council meeting on the budget?
Yep. At the end, under other business, it'll be a 30-minute session for a workshop, or however long council feels it needs.
Great, thank you.
It'll be just like this, but not me doing all the talking.
You invited all the agencies to come to the meeting on the 7?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
I thought that was the best date to pick, so that you could still have another meeting before the public hearing, and, you know, kind of give a little bit of a break to discuss what was brought forth with the outside agencies, before you hear also from the public, and give you enough time to consider these options, where they're not in the budget.
Is there enough time, if we gave you feedback on the 21st regarding all the extras, that's enough time for you to put something together for June 4?
Yes.
Thanks.
Darrell?
Question, Jessica, the outside agencies, have they made requests to you already? So you have those figures, or you don't know what those figures are coming forward?
Yeah, so in your budget book, the last tab, outside agencies, is their request forms.
So you already got that.
Yep. And that actually mirrors that budget consideration list, with the, with the exception of those first two, that were just the incremental changes to their requests. But you have their total, each outside agency's total request is in that last tab of your budget book. Yep. Which is why I felt comfortable limiting the brief summary that they give to three minutes, because you, you have all their information in front of you. This is more just, I want it more for you to be able to ask questions versus sitting through 15, 20 minutes of repetition of what you have in front of you. I don't want to extend your meetings late into the evening for something that you can read, and they can just quickly give a summary. And that's my budget presentation.
I'll just add that while we have this book now to digest between now and the 7th, you will all come to evolve in your understanding of why this wins awards year after year, and why Jessica is so good at this task, being able to present an enormous amount of data in a very cohesive manner. So thank you.
In case we forget, you know. Yeah, it's there. It's right there for you. This is actually the start of what I present to the GFOA for the award. So what, I think this is 160 pages in front of you there, about, you know, I'm rounding. So there's about 160 pages in front of you. They actually get almost 250 pages of a budget doc. So there's a lot more that goes into it, a lot more narrative. But as residents here, you know that narrative, so I don't, I want you to focus on the important things for the budget and not what my budget award doc is. So I narrow it down for you.
You have this in electronic format that you can send?
I do. I'd be more than happy to do that.
I would love that. Thank you.
I will send it to all of you.
And that's going to be posted on the website, too, correct?
Yes. I wasn't sure whether to wait until the new website was up or this one, but we can discuss that. Yeah.
That's a good discussion for us to have tomorrow.
Is there a timeline for the new website? Not to completely change?
So I just want to be clear, it's not a new website.
No, redesigned.
It's updated into the new, it's a new platform.
Of the same thing.
Yeah, it's a new generation. How's that? Sort of, kind of, May, June, June? Beginning of June. And I hate to say that, because that's what they say, but...
Again, just to confirm, there's an enormous amount of information here, but the entire, you know, the entirety of all of our work collectively, from a dollar's perspective, is captured in these, in these sections and these tabs. So there's not anything that the town's doing financially that's not in here. I encourage you to spend a little bit of time, maybe with just small sections at once, to get used to how the budget is laid out, so you can see how the items are broken out, and then maybe you can identify any questions to either Sophie or Jessica between now and the 7th, so that we are up to speed and comfortable with where things are in this, should the need come up for any consideration or discussion of adjustments or changes.
We've kind of done two different approaches over the years, and so on the 7th, I'll be kind of looking, I'll be prepared for either. But I'd be kind of looking for feedback based on your review of what you have, of whether or not you would like to go department by department. And, well, you know, between Sophie and I and the department heads will walk you through, and I'll get that checklist ready to hit upon those departments. Or in the past, we have also just highlighted the changes in the budget and made decisions based on the year-over-year impact. So, you know, I'd be looking for that feedback for the next meeting of how council would like to approach this year's budget discussion. And it could be something other than that, too. Those are just two examples of what we've done in the recent past.
I'll just share my particular perspective on that, is that going department by department can be the most exhaustive, and you get a chance to look at everything, particularly for our new council members. But it can also be numbing by the time you get to the last department, in terms of how much data you're, you're looking at and what you're actually considering making adjustments. So there actually, if you spend time with it and get your questions answered between now and the 7th, there actually is some efficiency, not that we're trying to rush this, but there is some efficiency to its review in highlighting out a half dozen or a dozen items that were in, that would be available to consider for significant changes or additions from last year to this year. That's, that's a biased perspective that puts our two newest counselors at a disadvantage, because they weren't here last year to approve that budget. So I'm not trying to cut that off by any means, but just making that as an observation. And Jessica's being very generous by being able to go either way with that conversation with us. So it's a lot of information. Again, spend some time with it, and I think you'll really see how well it's organized, and there is a very clear and obvious logic to how it's organized. And keep in mind distinctions between capital budget and operating budget. And I always like to remind folks that the entirety of the capital budget is paid from reserve accounts, so we are not burdening any of that tax increase with our capital budget expenditures. So to that end, thank you very much. And if we have questions, yeah?
Oh, I was just going to suggest, if it isn't burdensome, could we adopt a hybrid approach to how we're going to review it? And I'm thinking that we should look at it, if we have questions, send them to Sophie and Jessica. I'd love to hear what other people had for questions, so perhaps we can start in section by section, have a review of any outliers that you want to flag for us, any questions that other counselors have had, and then it allows us to go in that section and ask additional questions, and then move on to the next section, because we'll have the department heads with us. I think that might be a way for us to be efficient but thorough at the same time. Just an idea.
Darrell?
Couple of questions. I know Sophie said when we had the capital budget, to go down and look at equipment or whatever, and meet with the department heads. I like your idea that sometimes doing the job, department heads may agree with you or may not agree with you. That's the nature of the business. I like that discussion, the coming in, but I don't think we need every department head. You know, what I'm looking at is, you know, air public safety, police, fire are the important aspect. Public works is the important act. If we look at the major departments, I never understood why we always drag Neil in here for Winslow Park, and to sit here for hours and hours and be the last one, we really have nothing to say. So maybe if we did a hybrid approach, that where our major expenditures are, where our major services are being delivered, lengthen, shorten up the time we have to have, but we still could have that dialect, I think would be helpful.
So I, I'm willing to do whatever council wants, that's our job. But I also think it would be helpful to me if we could get council questions, because what I'd like, this coming week, if it's possible, so that we can sit down and formulate kind of answers, unless it's a "I'm stumped" question. Because if three different counselors ask a question just a little bit differently, and we have to answer it multiple times, I also have the idea that one, if one counselor asks a question, everybody should get the answer, right? If it's a, so if we could get people to try to get their questions to us by the end of next week, and then we could turn around a document, or by the middle of next week, we could turn around a document answering sometimes maybe two questions with one answer, and let everybody see what everybody's asking. I think that's great. And if we wanted to, I would invite all department heads who want to come, to come. But if you want to see a department head other than kind of the major budget centers, just let me know, and I'll ask that particular department head to come outside of...
We can also start with May 7, right? As this type of format, and May 21, if there's a department head you wish to speak to, they can come to that next meeting.
So it would be great for me to be a little bit fluid in the process, because it's also the first one for me. I, I like getting questions in writing, if I can, if it's easy for folks, just because it's easy to hear something and answer the wrong question. If, if it's a conversation where we sit down with each other, I'll probably recap what I think the questions are that I would answer for everybody, if that makes sense. But if, if folks who don't have as much experience want to sit down and have a longer chat about the budget, Jessica and I would make ourselves available. I would ask anything you send, that you send to me with a copy to Jessica, so she knows it's coming, but, so I can kind of keep track of what my council needs.
All right. Any other follow-ups or comments? We have some homework here. Spend time with our award-winning budget presentation. Thank you very much for the presentation, Jessica.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right. Our last item is a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Check it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Adjourn the meeting at 8:55.